Okay, if you're ready. We'll call to order the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, April first, two thousand and twenty-four. Item two, roll call, please.
Bashan?
Here.
Higgins?
Here.
Kirchdorfer?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
And Van Campen?
Here.
And Mankiewicz absent.
Item three, approval of March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four Village Board meeting minutes, if correct, and corrections of mistakes, if any. Uh, Tim and Tom, corrections, comments. Hearing on all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls, motion carries. Just a reminder to speak into your mics, please. Item four, public appearance, comments, and communications, item for discussion, possible action. A, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Do we have anybody tonight for public comments? See none, thank you. Item four B, Oregon area fire EMS district presentation of annual report for two thousand and twenty-three.
The pilot always sits over on this side, right? Doesn't the pilot always sit on this side?
Thank you, Oregon Village, for having us tonight. So I'm sure everybody here knows me. I'm Glenn Linsver, again, the fire chief here at the Oregon area fire EMS district, your contracted fire EMS department here in Dane County. I'm sure you can hear me just well, right, Amanda?
But people at home can't. You gotta really talk into them.
So I gotta really be loud tonight.
And who's with you tonight?
And who's with me tonight? I brought Casey Jesburger along. He's a hire that we made a few years ago, I think back in two thousand and twenty, when we brought him on as our EMS division chief here. So I told Casey, I said, I think it's apple time that he starts coming along with me to some of these meetings and get to know some of our municipal partners and different folks. So we got Casey here with us tonight. So the, the plan tonight, Phil and board, basically, is to kind of give two thousand and twenty-three a capture, all of our data and different things that happened in the fire district, looking at the, the run numbers and our capitals and our budget monies and everything else that goes with that. So we'll kind of go through this tonight and, you know, I'll try to do this in fifteen minutes. You know, I think Martin asked me, how long will this be? I said, I could make this fifteen minutes, or I could make this an hour and fifteen minutes. He said, maybe the fifteen to twenty-minute version would work just fine.
Fifteen would be good.
So, uh, but we're happy to be here on, what, April first, and we have no snowstorms showing up or anything else, which is unbelievable. Maybe we'll wait until Wednesday, but they will show up sooner or later. Something about the annual report that I think, I know you, the way I've always seen it over the years is the boards listen to me probably for the first two or three minutes, and then we kind of lose touch, and then you last, you listen to me for the last two or three minutes. And there's probably two parts, maybe two big objective items that I'm gonna just drill home really hard, that I need from the village of Oregon, uh, here, from here on out, and as you've always done before. And that's personnel and dollars. The biggest thing that this fire district needs, I think you've heard it, you've seen it amongst your own operations inside of the village, and that fire district is no different. If there's nothing else that you hear from me tonight is about dollars and cents and taking care of our men and women that basically do the job each and every day. And without those folks and without my forty-five or so part-time people that work for us, we have a very limited crew of full-time people, and you would not know that by the services that we deliver. The services that we deliver are twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days. Pager goes off and we're there, and a lot of times it's not only one call, but it's a multiple call going on, uh, inside of the fire district and those eighteen thousand residents that we have and the forty-four square miles that we protect. So the biggest thing you're gonna hear from me tonight is, again, about dollars and cents, taking care of our men and women, and making sure that we can respond and, and handle that call volume in the future. So, moving on, basically, here, I would assume Jeff is basically the-
I'm driving the show here, so you let me know where you wanna be.
He's driving, he's driving the show. You see our commitment to the community. We always talk about our respect, integrity, accountability, teamwork, the things that the fire, uh, EMS service, our men and women believe each and every day in what we provide to this community. Moving on, we just kind of got a, some table of contents there for those that wanna look at it. The chief's message, basically, is, um, again, something that I, I kind of hit on it just a little bit here, but I'll, I'll go back to forty-four square miles of the district. Keep in mind, and that's not only the village of Oregon, but we got three townships that are partners, uh, part of this group. And again, about eighteen hundred residents, growing, that kind of stuff. The majority of that growth now is in the village of Oregon as we know it, that kind of thing. This summer, we'll be celebrating the fire, the fire department of the Fire and EMS combination district, the fire department element, will be celebrating a hundred and thirty years of service this summer. So it'll be in August of this year. Side note on that, that's gonna be a celebration with the first responders event, with the police department and other first responders around Oregon, the, it's gonna be at the fire district. And one of our members, I always have to plug in there, Gene Berman, I think you know, a, a lot of you know Gene Berman, I've seen him over the years, he'll have fifty years in that fire department. So that's a, that's a lifetime and a commitment in itself, working another part-time job someplace else and taking care of, um, his neighbors and others in this community for a long time. So that's one large commitment, so I would appreciate anybody to be there that day and be part of that celebration. Moving on, Jeff, basically, just kind of a snapshot of the personnel that we have. Again, we are, we have a limited crew of full-time staff, and we have a lot of part-time people that have been with us and have been working us for, for a number of years. We took a snapshot here at this last holiday event, this last Christmas season, you kind of have it there. Just moving down a little bit, Jeff, you kind of look at, for those that have been with me and have heard this message before, ongoing training ground, ongoing training ground. We have a lot of men and women that are with us for probably one to three years. Again, this last year, we had seven different people that went to seven different career departments, some medical facilities. You can kind of see a snapshot of where these people went and the different, the different levels of some of the folks are paramedic firefighters, some of them have been brought into more management roles, looking at fire prevention and fire, uh, and EMS and that kind of stuff. Up in Stevens Point was another one of our members. So again, just a wide, vast, uh, group of individuals doing different things in, in the fire service. Mr. Jesburger here next to me, basically, takes care of all of my data work, and one of the things you look at these hours, and these are some, some crazy hours, and you're thinking about a twenty-eighty job, a forty-hour work week job, and you're looking at these numbers and you're saying, "Fire chief, this is impossible that these numbers really exist." Uh, but this is how this operation works, and I'm not saying it's, it's great. Anybody looking from the outside would see these hours, they would wanna run away from this in a heartbeat. Because, uh, yes, forty-three-hundred and some hours, Casey, last year, twenty, uh, forty-two some, forty-two twenty, twenty-nine, basically were hours on call. Now that means taking phone calls, being responsible with the crew, uh, basically, uh, being ready to respond for this fire district someplace, and making sure that person's not underneath the influence, not, uh, gone away from home, uh, being able to respond and be able to deal with the on-duty crews. Well, then, if you look at those numbers to the left, like to say that twenty-four for myself or that twenty-two for Casey, uh, those are numbers that we are actually on calls or physically in this office are doing, doing work for this district. So you can compare that to like a twenty-eighty job. Those are the hours that we're in different places, after hours or whatever it might be, calls in the middle of the night and all that other kind of stuff. The remainder of the team, though, you can kind of see some of the different numbers that we have going. We got our, our callback for our emergency crews, for our, our full-time people, then we got our automatic Kelly days that Lisa's so familiar with, and John and, and the payroll and accounting department, the way the Kelly days work, and people work forty-eight hours a week, and then you call back people, you have other people off, have, uh, every hundred and, or two-hundred-and-twelve hours in a twenty-eight day cycle. There's a lot of different nuances, basically, in the fire departments that are different from a twenty-eighty job, is what I'm trying to tell you. Uh, again, you can kind of look at, you know, I think we talked about this other years, I talked about this with our township partners, different places. It's one of those things that we always look at, the ongoing training and training and the cost of training and bringing new people onboard and all of that kind of stuff. In the next slide or two, uh, if we move forward a little bit, we've got the budget in there first. You can kind of see the budgets, uh, basically, how we've been going here. Keep in mind, I came here in sixteen, been a far cry from where we are in sixteen to where we are today. We have bought a lot of capital stuff and all that kind of stuff. And I'll never forget the former administrator, Mr. Grace, when, uh, when Mike talked to me probably back in sixteen or maybe seventeen, he said, "Glenn," he said, "I gotta ask you a question." He says, "The fire district spent fifty thousand dollars in the last ten years for capital improvement." He says, "Do you, that's probably not a realistic number, right?" And I said to him, "You are one hundred percent correct, Mike. That is not a realistic number, and how the fire district made it for the, the other nine years before that, uh, without any capital improvements and any, spending any money, just, it, it's unheard of." Uh, and you can kind of see some of those subsequent decisions that were made a long, long time ago, uh, and that we're just kind of trying to catch up in all the different things. Again, we're moving forward, we're, we're gaining, um, a lot of different avenues with our apparatus, our personnel, and everything else, and we have came from a, um, you know, I don't say an outdated organization and that kind of stuff, but we have made a lot of strides, uh, forward to where fire and EMS needs to be this day and age. Again, our annual budgets, we all know what they are. The majority of that money, again, that same message that I talked about already tonight, is basically dollars and cents and the men and women that work for our district each and every day. Uh, a few years ago, again, you know, a lot of our people were working just a little bit of a minimum. You know, Carlene, I can tell you, we're not still at the fifteen dollars an hour across the board, but we're probably about starting around eleven-ish, ten-fifty, eleven-ish, for onboarding new people and then getting them up a little bit higher to that. Ultimate goal is, again, you know with today's economy and today's world that we live in, uh, it's all about dollars and cents and trying to, to have people here, and to just keep moving that along, uh, with the dollars and cents to, to make it, uh, work for our operation. Capital improvement, but-
Sorry. That was me.
Cap, that's all right, no worries. Thought the building was coming down for a second, split, split second. Uh, capital improvement, you can kind of take a look at the different things that we've done, all that kind of stuff over the last couple of years. To start with Phil and some of the aggressive boards that we had a few years ago, with, with some truck replacement and some, uh, vehicles, and then we replaced some ambulances and all that kind of stuff. The biggest thing that I will say to, today, and Phil knows this firsthand, Tim now has got a good, a good grasp on it, too. With our capital plans, we've got everything kind of built out, and we've got replacements built in. So if we buy an ambulance, we know in seven, eight years from now that ambulance is gonna be replaced, uh, and just, you know, we're gonna upgrade it, we're gonna do this, and we've got our COTS on a schedule. Almost everything, I don't think there's anything anymore that's not on a capital plan. Uh, back to sixteen, when I first came, that stuff was not on a capital plan. We've changed a lot of stuff, we worked very collectively with the boards, the commissions and everybody else, and brought all that stuff forward. So we've made leaps and bounds, uh, making all that stuff happen. Two thousand and twenty-four, basically, you know, Lisa knows very well, I think Martin knows, we've got a squad replacement coming in that should be in a couple of weeks, that's around four hundred thousand. Again, we went the avenue of looking for a good used. Uh, that vehicle will probably last us twenty years, uh, is what we're looking at. We found a vehicle with about five thousand miles on it, it's coming from the southern part of the country. Uh, if we would've bought a new vehicle, we'd be looking at nine hundred to a million dollars for that vehicle, so probably better than half savings, that kind of stuff. So we should have that up and running. I, I hope by July first, we should have that on the road and people trained to drive it and operate it and all the other stuff that goes with it. Jeff?
Keep going.
Yep. Uh, staffing plan, basically, we laid out a staffing plan last year with the commission and the group, uh, and again, you've heard me say this before, I will again, uh, repeat the same thing, and it's basically, when I, or when I, when this district does not have part-time people to work the shifts and to fill our station and to backfill our full-time people, we need to hire more full-time people. And fortunately, again, we've been pretty good in recruiting and bringing people in and doing this, onboarding and bringing people around fast and everything else, but when that doesn't happen, or to the depth that, uh, our recruitment is coming in the door, then we're gonna have to at least stay at this schedule for hiring full-time people or, uh, may, basically accelerate that and making sure that we have people to be able to do the shifts. And that's kind of a snapshot of where that is. And, uh, again, it's dollars and cents and numbers, and anytime we have dollars and cents and numbers, it makes financial people, administrators, uh, department heads, everybody crunch and all the above, but those are the realities of what we need. Like, again, we need the men and women to be able to do the jobs in the field. Basically, our call volume last year, you can see where our call volume is. Basically, that ambulance right now has been doing about a hundred plus a month, uh, on responses in the fire district and the, and the, a few here or there with our neighboring partners that need some assistance every once in a while, and then our fire side of it, uh, symbolized by basically red, is about seven hundred, uh, four hundred and seventy-nine calls, basically, where there's a fire response needed with an ambulance or a standalone, a carbon monoxide or a car crash or something of that nature. Over the years, you look back at two thousand and six, that says eighteen up there, but even eighteen, uh, we weren't really defining in, getting in on priority fire medical dispatch, looking at what the nine-one-one center does with the caller, to what's happening in the field and be able to update that stuff in real time, so that we could send the appropriate apparatus and personnel and not have a full structured fire response with, say, fourteen people, we can cut it back to five. When we can do that, that saves a lot for the taxpayers and for the organization. And also, don't, uh, don't worry your men and women out, basically, having a lot of false alarms and people responding to the station in the middle of the night different Basically, some, uh, fire responses, uh, I'll cover the fire responses, you can, again, four hundred and seventy-nine fire responses, we had seventeen different fires in the district of some nature, that kind of stuff. You can kind of take a look that we've had fifty-one car, uh, car crashes, uh, where we've used extrication equipment, that kind of stuff. And then you can look here, we're fifty-two automatic or mutual aid requests with our neighboring departments wherever we may have been, and that's a list of where we have been. And then, uh, again, it's fifty-two different responses outside of our fire district of Oregon, to kind of give you a snapshot of where that is. We are pretty busy. Again, if you look at the calls and you, and the stuff that's happening, about four and a half, four-point-seven calls a day and growing, uh, with those responses. So Casey, you're along, and you know these EMS numbers better than I, probably, so I'm gonna let Casey run these EMS numbers.
Yeah, if we go along with this, we go back to the, the charts showing our incident data, one of the changes that we had, too, a couple of years ago, um, was trying to prioritize, taking care of the emergencies at hand, understanding that EMS, um, is really the focal point of the fire and EMS service these days. Um, so what we did right around two thousand, where you also saw the drop in fire calls, and then you see the increase in EMS calls, uh, one of our goals is to ensure that we're taking care of the residents of the village and the residents of all the townships and trying to make sure that we capture our calls. That's gonna be the most timely and efficient manner for our folks instead of relying on mutual aid. So one, one of that shifts was to reduce, reduce the amount of fire calls we went on, uh, to use of our on-duty staffing to capture all those second ambulance calls. So, um, this past year, twelve-hundred-and-eighty EMS incidents, uh, up eighty calls from last year. That's, uh, the most that we've seen, pretty much ten percent of the time, give or take, um, an EMS call is that second ambulance call. Um, that's not even accounting for other times of mutual aids coming in, um, couple full for that. Our men and women get to go on calls, get, get to obtain and gain the experience, um, to help folks, it's gonna help them in their careers, um, going on more calls, and also generate, generates more revenue for, for the fire district. Um, again, our goal is to make sure that we're handling our stuff and not pushing out to our neighbors like Stoughton, Brooklyn, Pittsburgh. They have enough of their own calls going on, so we've been very successful in that. On top of that, though, we, as our neighbors grow and have their growing pains, we're also providing mutual aid a lot, um, and I think that's somewhere in, in the data there. That right there, just a snapshot of all the types of calls that were going on, so our folks are seeing a whole array of different things, from sick folks, uh, people in cardiac arrest, delivering babies, the whole nine yards. You can go on, Jeff.
So, so basically, before we move on to this screen, I just wanna go back one thing, and I, and I always reiterate and look at the, the fall prevention program that we have with the senior center and that kind of thing. If you look at our demo, our, our demographics and our calls, our second highest responder is the falls that happen in our fire district. So if there's any place that our prevention bureau and also, um, the senior center can work on it, uh, what is that, almost two hundred calls of our thousand-something, twelve-hundred calls? A fifth of our calls are basically in fall, in falls. And some of those calls get transported and not all of them do, some of them might be a treat and just leave folks at home, and some of them get transported, but it just, you know, you, you look at those numbers and that kind of stuff just very much stands out. And Rachel and, uh, our team has been working on that for quite a while, quite a while already, so. Uh, moving on, moving on, basically, uh, this next stuff here is our, our public education and, um, as, what I, what I tell people, I, I always say this, you know, the police departments in a lot of municipalities, I think in Oregon also, always look at contacts and how many people we contact a year and what we do for different, say, responses and amount of people that we touch in some way. And that might be an inspection, that might be an actual call, it could be fire prevention and all this other kind of stuff. This next page, basically, host out everything that this, this fire district does and the different places that we're part of and what we do with our prevention efforts, our smoke detector installs, our COs, uh, public life safety, uh, training, all, all of the different things that we do. And if you look at those numbers, we do about eighty-four hundred contacts in a calendar year. And you break that down, that's about seven hundred a month. Uh, that's between calls and our inspections and all this other kind of stuff. And, you know, we start talking about the calls and we start talking about, uh, you know, the history of stuff that's happening in our businesses and that kind of stuff. Uh, I go back to our two percent dues. We just went through the two percent dues audit last week, uh, we passed the audit and that kind of stuff. The state's giving the fire district through the four municipalities that we have, just about a hundred thousand, about a hundred and four thousand dollars, as I recall, uh, towards the fire district for fire prevention, uh, the maintenance efforts in new constru, or I should say, in existing construction. So all of our life high-hazard buildings, we go into all of those buildings just to kind of get a snapshot of showing you what we do. We are in those buildings every six months, we're in there twice a year, and that's all of our, um, any of our senior centers, any of our schools, um, any of our restaurants, any of these folks, anything where there's public involved, high-hazard, large numbers, we're in those buildings. And the state is looking at, basically, the fire chief signing off of that, that this is basically being done, and then the follow-up and making sure that people are compliant. So with all of that kind of stuff, as you, I, I know I sent it out to Martin and to the board a couple of weeks ago, I think it was probably about ten days ago, it's just about the new construction and the stuff that's happening in new construction, about the inspection and the enforcement and us watching over that, when there are no sprinklers in this building and all of that kind of stuff. So those are, those are things that, believe it or not, even for me doing this for many, many years as I have, those are the things that keep you up at night because you don't know what that's going to be if such and such a building with three floors go on fire and, and a certain area where it's populated with people and what that's gonna look like. And I remind people of this, anytime I have a chance of fire prevention and talking to people and businesses and, and contractors and all that kind of stuff, it, there's a cost of doing business to make sure it's safe while construction's taking place. And if you cut those lines, somebody's gonna get hurt or killed. And whatever we need to do to try to stop that upfront, that is much, is, is what we need to do. Again, it's not in a, we're doing it as part of the permitting process, the building inspector and the fire department, we're looking at these things and making sure all that stuff happens. If you think back, for those of us that've been around Dane County for a long time, this happened in the city of Madison a number of years ago, it was on the east side on the interstate. And I was part of the response with the city of Madison with another department on the east side of Madison, when we burnt down a big complex that we shut down the interstate for in the middle of June. Uh, and it was about a hundred and some unit building on the backside of basically I-90. And again, it was basically, I believe, as I recall, smoking material on that site, and that brought down that building one hundred percent in a few hours. So there are just some basic things that need to happen, and we need to make sure that we have things in play to make this all happen and work. Uh, and it's just, you know, it's just, it's one of those things, that as we all get busy, as we have other inspections to do, we have other things, uh, that shows the importance. And this year, we'll be adding another inspector on with the fire district, uh, prevention, uh, and, uh, an inspector, basically, a division chief, uh, running that, uh, division, basically, looking at all that kind of stuff and being able to be out in the, out in the field and that kind of stuff. I don't mind doing it myself, but it takes time. It takes time from the rest of the operation, everything else, but we have to be committed to that, for the pa, for the public safety and for, uh, community safety. Those are key, key things, so. EMS division?
Yeah, really, the quick synopsis of, to match with our ever-increasing call volume, the two goals to kind of match that is, um, training and the service that we provide for our folks. So, um, one of the chief's goals when, when he was hired here, and then one of my goals when I was hired, it was to transition, uh, department from an advanced EMT level, where you can start some IVs and give a couple medications to the paramedic level. So last February, we, uh, enhanced the service to the paramedic level, which pretty much allows us to do a whole bunch of different things, cardiac-wise, give a whole bunch of different type of medications, um, put in advanced airways and whatnot, and I get bored with all the skills, but basically, we're able to provide the highest level of pre-hospital care to our residents and visitors, which is a huge milestone for us and something that, uh, our community should be really proud of. Then with that, we have the awesome responsibility of training all of our men and women, uh, from our career folks all the way down to the new person fresh out of class. So one of my other goals, um, with some grant money and some other things that we awarded, was to enhance our training program. Um, last year, right around February, March, we were also able to receive a mid-fidelity training mannequin to go with our training room. Uh, it's an interactive mannequin where we can start IVs on, do airways, um, talk through it, blink through it, do lung sounds, so a whole lot of, um, different and aggressive things to help with our training program, really to help, um, our youngsters gain the experience, to be able to help the folks that they're serving. Go ahead, Jeff. And this, uh, this just touches on that as well.
Again, you know, when we looked at this, when, when Phil and, uh, the, uh, commission members from back in two thousand and six hired, it's two thousand and sixteen, hired me, basically, we, we talked about that transition to paramedic. We looked at our proximity of our, our, our medical providers and the drive time between Oregon and where our hospitals are and what kind of treatment and, that we can do to aid, uh, in any prevention measures and make the successful outcome for our, for our residents and the people that visit this area. So that is key. If you think about how long it takes us to get to a hospital, uh, and, you know, the red lights and sirens are only gonna gain you a little bit of time, not very much at all. Uh, it just takes you time to get to those hospitals, so now we got those preventative care measures right in the back of the, uh, on the ambulance and the oversight of our, our medical field to be able to provide that. So it's a huge accomplishment for a small community and it's, it's great for our residents that we take care of in our communities in the district.
That hallway looks familiar.
That hallway looks familiar, like it's that village hall.
Anyone recognize that?
Yes, right.
It's a shame it wasn't on fire, though.
So as Jeff pointed out, we're in that old village hall quite frequently. Um, yes, there are probably a few mannequins laying around once in a while, there might be a door left open, there might be a light switch left on, but, uh, for the most part, I think I got most of our men and women trained. But, uh, that happens occasionally, we'll leave something open or that kind of thing. But there again, we've been using that building quite a bit, we've been using, uh, basically fake smoke, we're using fog machines and putting it so you cannot see your hand in front of your face and arms reach out, putting people into different environments, hiding, hiding mannequins different places, like, uh, now, I was, I was gonna say like the, like, the village employees had different places that they could go and maybe hide some days, and I say it as a joke today, I don't wanna get myself in trouble tomorrow. But, uh, all these different rooms and the different places that we go, uh, basically, our folks, our men and women are doing stuff with these mannequins and, uh, again, co, uh, finding them, being, hauling them out in, in the, uh, in the smoke environment, that kind of stuff, and then working as a team, and then just, you know, uh, we always try to do entanglement stuff. And when I say entanglement stuff, if you can imagine yourself crawling on your hands and knees on the floor through this stuff, and I think, Amanda, you went through some fire academy, so you, you know what I'm talking about here, and then we'll have some instructors, basically, throw some wire on your back with your SEBA and you're all tangled up and you can't get out, and all of a sudden, then your bottle goes off and you need to, to leave the room or somebody calls a mayday. Uh, they need to experience it so many times over before, you know, hopefully it never happens in their career, but they need to experience it, they need to understand it. And those are the things that I have learnt over the years that we need to, and I tell Jesburger this and I tell our rest of our team, that we need to, to install this in our young members because we are giving them a false sense of security if we're not because we are giving them a false sense of security if we're not training them and making them what we need to be when they're coming to wherever it might be in our district. So. Lot of the different things that we've done, otherwise you look at these hours again. Again, we've got about 2,900 hours in that, that back page there about training and that kind of stuff. I know we talked about this last year. You just look at the hours that we drop into training and all that kind of stuff, there's cost of doing it. Uh, other than hiring full-time people, uh, and trying to, to, you know, capture some of that down. Uh, you know, there's really no other way. You just got to train people. We're, we're fortunate to have those people. Capital purchases, you can move a little bit ahead there, Jeff. Next page on 18. Different stuff that we've updated. We've updated the 20-year-old stuff now to some electronic, uh, over hydraulics, basically. A lot of different cutters and spreaders and the equipment that we have. A lot of the cribbing, the turtle plastics and all the stuff that we use for trench and re- trench rescue and for extrication. All of the other kind of things that are there, it has all been updated to the point of, we used to use wood where it would absorb hydrocarbons, oils and gasolines and, and so on. Uh, we've eliminated a lot of that stuff and we went to plastics now where we can basically clean it and reuse it, that kind of stuff. So we should be set there. And then our biggest upgrade again too was, uh, last year was basically the Motorola radios. Everything got, all the apparatus got to, went to the new Motorola radios to the latest Dane Con versions of what we need to be. And, uh, a lot of our radio issues have been gone. Uh, basically going, going to the Motorola's, duly, uh, buying the new, uh, handhelds the year before, just has totally changed our communication nightmare that we had in the past. So thank you for those tremendous dollars. Grants and dollars and different things, uh, I think Lisa and I, John have been basically, and Casey have been working on the ARPA fund, some EMS funding and some different things that came in last year. Some of the, the leftover COVID money that was out there from the federal or state governments. We put some of that stuff towards, uh, helping with offsetting the dollars and cents in our budgets with our, with our men and women as far as our, uh, part-time people, that kind of stuff. We bought some different things, uh, that kind of stuff. We've had different donations from the outside organizations, that kind of thing. The association has been good to us, uh, meaning the fire association, our 501(c) fundraising, uh, part of the district basically has the, uh, big money raffle every year in December. And they've been spending about 20,000 a year back into the district, putting in equipment and that kind of stuff that goes with that. We were fortunate this year, uh, to receive a FEMA countywide grant, basically, uh, where we're going to have it over for the next four years, basically. And again, this is going to offset some of our costs with our men and women as far as our responses and our, uh, say longevity, some, some incentive programs for people to be down there, uh, be part of it, all that kind of stuff. So we're getting about just around, real close to 60,000 a year. Again, there's a lot of paperwork and a lot of, uh, administration behind the scenes. It's easy to get the grant, but it's a lot more work to, uh, to make that all happen, uh, and make, you know, behind the scenes and keeping track of all that stuff. Our future planning, basically, I think you guys are well aware. Uh, Elise and, uh, the planning folks here basically got that downtown being looked at. We'll see what we have, what happens with that, where that goes in the future. Uh, I think there's just a lot of, there's a lot of potential, uh, different things that are looking at in the, in the greater county area also. You know, I've always been a belief that, um, that people should try to, uh, work with their neighbors and try to, to, uh, uh, bring fire and EMS together, uh, at a larger scale. Uh, there might be hope for that stuff yet, maybe someday in my career or in my lifetime, I'm hoping. Uh, we'll see. You'll still need, you'll still need to do something with an upgrade to this building here, uh, probably in '27. I think we got it in the ca- capital plan, as I recall, that kind of thing and see how that all flushes through. Uh, you know, you start moving a location, then you start, you start opening up, uh, I'll just say Pandora's box, uh, as far as every, every one of our district partners will want it closer to their township, uh, and a different direction. And, uh, there's, there's just a lot of, you know, a lot of thoughtfulness that has to be part of, uh, of moving that. So we'll see where that all goes. I know in the next days and weeks, I know the, uh, the fire district committee that's working on that's coming together again. I think sometime in May, uh, basically, you know, still planning on doing some certain things and moving forward. We're working to see what happens with the, with the plan, basically of the, from the village as far as the down, downtown study, that kind of thing. Uh, before I wrap this up, I would say, is there any questions from the board? Amanda?
Can I just verify that I heard you correctly, that you start trainees at 10 and a half to 11 dollars an hour?
Let me be precise on that. Let me ask Jess Burger, because he's got this memorized better than I do.
Yeah, all of our new folks, uh, in their orientation phase are at $10.50 an hour. Uh, and then it increases based on their certification. We try to, um, incentivize the, our EMT staff, because that's where the bread and butter is, the most training, all the specialized stuff. Um, at the end of the day, we're still far behind, um, on both fire side and EMS side, with really trying to be competitive. We've come a long way since the fire chief has gotten here, but yeah, those, those numbers are right.
As Lisa can contest and as Glenn Linsmore, your fire chief can contest, when I came here, or Phil can too, because he was president of the commission at the time, um, most of that group was 725 an hour when I came here in '16.
Wow.
Wow is correct.
That's, that's really low and good job bringing it where you got it. That's, that's good. But I, I feel like that's, I, I'm just going to say it, that's embarrassingly low.
It is embarrassing, embarrassingly low and all the above. And the thing of it is, Amanda and others, and people have to realize this, that the people that come to this fire district and are sticking with us are doing this for a career afterward. And that, that's basically what they're doing. They're coming here, working their hearts out, doing thousands of hours, uh, towards fire and EMS, going to M A T C, getting their medics, doing their fire classes, the different levels, doing inspector, whatever it might be. And then when they come out, usually between one and three years, depending on what they have when they come in, uh, they are turnkey ready for you name the departments wherever it is. So again, when we don't have those folks coming, we need to hire. And that, uh, you know, just be prepared.
I don't have a question, but I did want to point out something that you glossed over in this report that I think is important for the community at large, the board to hear, which is that in addition to all of the hours you put into serving our community, you also put in a great deal of hours to connect to our community through events. So just this last weekend, my family, um, went to the Easter egg hunt and got to meet firefighters and paramedics and make a connection to them on a day when we are not in great need. And that's really important to me, especially as a mom, that my kids feel like a firefighter is a safe person because they got to meet them and see them on a day where we're not having the worst time ever. And the Christmas tree lighting and all of those things, those are added hours that you're putting in. And I, I think we have to acknowledge and thank you for the amount of effort that you're putting in on top of your role to create those positive connections. Um, it's really important and it, I'm sure it takes a lot of time and effort on your end. So I just wanted to thank you for that. I don't know that we really sat and talked about that.
Well, I, I, I thank you for that, Lynn, and I appreciate that for the acknowledgement and all the above. And I, I will tell you, that's by, that's by my design, because I'll, I'll tell you right off, my men and, a lot of men and women say to me, "Fire chief, why are you, why are you connecting yourself this much to the, to the, to the village or into the district as much as you do?" And it, it's basically, it's common sense and it's, it, it's basically a business model. And the business model is, I don't know how much we are gaining on fire prevention efforts with smoke detectors, COs and houses and everything else in conjunction with our schools. And this goes back to the larger picture. It's easy for us to say tomorrow to take the fire station and move it away from the downtown. But I don't know how much that that fire station has already done for fire prevention and community efforts with us having it at that location. Having that fire station there, having people see that, having the men and women contacting people, might be the contacts over at QuickTrip, might be all of the schools that come into that fire station every fall, going through that fire station, different classes, talking fire prevention. There is a lot of, again, you talk about these contacts that we're talking about, this 85, 8,400 and growing. We don't know where and when this is actually gaining us something in this larger picture. So if you take that fire station, you put that fire station out of town someplace and now you've got to bring a fire truck to someplace, that's going to be a whole different view than what you have it today, is what I'm trying to say. So again, I don't have to make that decision. You guys have to make that decision, basically. But in general, those are the things that you have to think about in my, in my world, because I don't, I don't know what that's doing for us and prevention measures and all the other stuff as far as, you know, bringing people in or say even recruiting and, and being part of the community and seeing a community like you're, like you're, uh, basically describing now, Lynn, if that makes any sense.
Everybody else? Okay.
So then the only comment, again, I will just come back with Phil and thank you for being here. I will just say, I tell my community partners and my townships the following, I'm going to remind everyone again of this. Again, the Oregon area fire and EMS district is only as good as all of our community partners. That's our three townships and the village of Oregon. There is equipment, there are capital purchases made each and every year that benefits some a little bit larger than others. We might be purchasing ladders and a ladder in the future that maybe doesn't benefit the townships, maybe only once every couple of years, but there's an added benefit. The village purchased a couple hundred thousand dollar tender a few years ago. It really doesn't do much for water suppression and fire suppression in the village of Oregon, but it helps in the fire district and our non-hydrated areas. My point is, we have to do this stuff together, 24/7, 365 days a year. And we have to be thoughtful of all the partners and making sure we keep our coalitions and our groups together. I'll be very honest with you, in the years that I've been here and worked with this group, it's been very, uh, not only here with the village, but our townships, it's been very rewarding. I think we've, we've came a long ways with what we've done and all that kind of stuff. And again, I want to continue that, that forward movement and all that kind of stuff. So we've got some different things going, again, with the station and some different building and all that kind of stuff. But again, we, we need all of our partners. So with that, I thank you for, for the time. Hope you have a good night. Hope it's a short meeting.
We used to.
Thank you, Chief.
It was only 15 minutes, Jeff.
Well, thank you, uh, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, uh, Linsmore and Chief, uh, Jess Burger. Uh, I'm just going to check. I saw a gentleman came in a little later and I wonder if you're here for a public comment, sir? Okay, sorry. Thought I'd check. Okay, uh, let's see. Item five, approval vouchers in the amount of 701,000, uh, $1.88. Uh, looking for motion to approve. Carleen and Lynn, comments, questions? Hearing, uh, roll call ball, please.
Higgins?
Yes.
Bashan?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dan Campan?
Yes.
And Kurt Storger.
Yes.
Item six, consent agenda stack recommendation, motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented, A through E. And I know, uh, well, let's get a motion on the table first. Carleen and Tom, and then I know Carleen may have a question.
Yeah, I just had a question about this, um, urban, let's see, urban area boundary, uh, agreement. I was looking at the map and noticing that the urban area boundary includes those areas where we've had a lot of concerns about safety and the streets and wondered if it, if this gives us any greater flexibility or jurisdiction to do anything regarding those school intersections and safety.
I don't believe that this, uh, map and this effort by, um, the DOT, uh, it doesn't expand, you know, those areas were already included in the last urban area. Um, this actually was a lot larger, extended almost all the way down to Brooklyn and included some area, um, kind of north into Fitchburg and, um, Fitchburg's kind of taking that area. But, um, we have been working on, and I think maybe you missed the last meeting, Carleen, but some different, um, options for the middle school area, um, and mov- moving around some different road projects. So we can definitely update you about that. But this is just kind of determining the, um, the roads within the village that are, but it's kind of the urban area definition, what areas are, um,
Yeah, I was just looking at these questions and wondering if in those questions, there could be questions like, is there, are there things that we could do? So I don't, you know, I don't know completely what urban area boundary. It wasn't completely clear to me what this, even reading this, what that.
Yeah, I think it's just areas that, um, the village could potentially grow into in the next decade or so. This isn't looking at particular problem areas yet.
And, and just the designation of those types of roadways based off of usage and class. Because, um, minor collectors, major collectors, and really not too much has changed, I don't believe.
Okay.
That just, that feeds into federal highway funding, dollars and cents and those sorts of things and what sort of.
It just feels like safety ought to be part of the dollars and cents that come from those entities to be able to say, okay, well, we're, we're, we have to, we're in charge of these areas and we're getting these dollars and we want to be able to route some of those dollars towards safety.
And we can, yeah. That's what, that's what we're, I mean, as a village and village board, yeah, that's what you're doing. Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the consent agenda? Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those motion carries. Item seven, reports committees on for discussion and or possible action, a sustainability committee. One, organic collection and composting study subsidy agreement with Green Box LLC for a one-year subsidy up to $12,000 for 100 residential organic collection and compost services. Uh, committee staff recommendation, motion to approve and get a motion on the table.
Can I, can I interject with, please? So there's, I had a, an updated agreement this afternoon from, uh, the, uh, Green Box. And I just have, have Jeff pull it up really quick. It's just a couple of minor adjustments that I just, I just want to make sure that you guys see and then when you make your motion or if you make your motion, that it's with these changes in mind. So, um, start with page, uh, two, right at the top, right there. It's just correcting, uh, a reference in a section that was incorrect. And then on page three, uh, right at the top there, it's just rephrasing a sentence, which I just talked with Derek about and we're, we're okay with. And then, uh, on page, bottom of page four, there's just another section reference that wasn't correct. And then, uh, go up just a little bit there, just adding the letter A in the middle of the page. Go down just a little bit, Jeff. Yep, right there. A. So just those couple of minor changes from what you see in the packet. Uh, and so I would recommend if you want to move forward with this, just approving what's been presented here with the changes.
Is there someone to present on this or just available for questions or how we proceed here?
However you want to.
Oh, wow, yeah.
If you want, if we can give background or answer any questions.
Well, I, I suspect the committee maybe.
Yeah, I can bring us all together. Do you want to get the motion on the table first before we do anything or?
Uh, sure, mm-hmm. Amanda?
Move to approve with the changes.
Okay. And Tim? All right. Go ahead, Amanda. I have a line, sorry.
Okay, so I'm very excited to bring this to you. The sustainability committee has only met twice and we're already bringing something to you. Talk about progress. Um, so, and that's really all thanks to a couple of really key people, um, involved, not I or the, the committee. So, um, a little bit of background, Ben, um, here from Green Box. Ben, you can kind of come up to the table so you're ready to answer any questions that they might have. Um, Ben Stanger is the founder, founder, CEO, head honcho, the guy in charge of Green Box Compost. He approached Elise and Martin, um, and I, uh, along with Jeff. We met a couple of months ago, um, about the idea of bringing Green Box into the village of Oregon as a service area, um, uh, and what we could kind of do to encourage participation in composting. And so we took that and, um, Ben met with the sustainability committee and provided a couple of ideas for us, some proposals. And this is the proposal that the sustainability committee wants to bring to you. So what it would look like is the first 100 registrations of a resident of the village of Oregon would see a discounted rate in a curbside collection. Um, it's a monthly cost, so that monthly cost would be reduced. Um, and the village would subsidize a bit of that reduction along with some generosity from Green Box to discount it for us, um, allowing the village of Oregon residents to enjoy a year of curbside collection at a discounted rate. Um, and then they can choose what they want to do after that. Um, it's a very cool program. You get a bucket, you fill it with compost stuff, um, and they'll come and get it from your doorstep and give you a new bucket.
Mostly food waste.
Mostly food waste. They do a lot of education on what to compost and what not to compost. So that will be quite nice. Um, and it opens the door for some possibilities later in the future if we want to have a large, larger scale program, um, maybe a drop-off center if that, you know, if this really catches on and seems like something that the village is interested in. Uh, but this just kind of gets the ball rolling and, and gives our residents a bit of an advantage to try it out for the first year. So Ben is here to answer any questions that you have about the composting part, because I have no idea.
Uh, yeah, I'm here to answer questions. This is, yeah, it's on, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, um, so I was wondering, um, can this be done with, uh, uh, people who live in apartments? Is there a way, a place where they can leave it and you could pick it up and?
Yeah, so currently we have about a little bit over 700 members, uh, in the Madison area, um, basically everywhere north of Oregon, the Madison area. Um, and, uh, I don't know the exact numbers. We have many, uh, apartment dwellers and we work kind of on a, uh, ad hoc basis, um, with those different apartments as to where's the best location, but usually it's just the front door. Uh, and we swap those out there and it's not an issue at all.
Uh, and follow-up too? Also, I was just going to say, uh, bu- businesses.
Uh, businesses, well, that wouldn't be covered by this program, but we could definitely do that and we have a separate kind of commercial wing of our, of our company.
Okay, gotcha.
I didn't, what's the frequency on the pickup?
We pick up every other week, a four-gallon bucket, yeah.
Four gallon, you said?
Four gallon, yeah. Um, and to briefly go over, actually, because we have this here, which is very helpful. Um, uh, this is actually almost, almost right. Um, uh, That's why I put the estimate. Yeah. Uh, and that's just because we kinda switch things up to look, to make it, try and make it more simple for this program. But we generally charge people every four weeks. For this program, we would charge monthly. I think this makes logistics of this agreement a little bit simpler. Uh, and so that standard month cost would be twenty-six dollars. Uh, and then we would cover three dollars of the cost. You all would cover ten, leaving, uh, a Village of Oregon resident another thirteen dollars a month. Uh, and then basically those same numbers would carry down to the two buckets every other week from, uh, I think thirty-six to, uh, we'd still, still cover ten, we would cover three, and that would make it twenty-three, exactly. Um, and that just allows, uh, if people want, they can have a higher level of service, but the commitment on your part is the same.
And then, did I see somebody else offering a very similar program in Oregon? I saw a Facebook ad today. Is that a different company, competitor or what?
There are two other, uh, we have two other competitors in the Madison area. Um, Curbside Composter and Earth Stew, um, they've been around for about ten years. Um, they're both doing great work. I'll say the scale of our goals are probably slightly different in that our goals work with the Village of Oregon directly. And I think those other companies are satisfied with single residences. Um, and so, uh, yeah, that's kind of the terrain.
Yeah, I think it's an important point. The village is not endorsing or choosing one vendor for all of the village to use. Um, village residents can choose any of these options. Um, it's just that we are partnering with Green Box to provide a hundred residents a bit of a discount to try it out. But we wouldn't exclude any other businesses to participate in our area.
Okay, other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. I think this is for Lynn, on how the Sustainability Plan, Committee plans to push this out. So folks will know and what kinda timeline you have on it?
Yes. So we're excited because by having this at this meeting, should it be approved, uh, we have Earth Day coming up. And so the Sustainability Committee plans to push it quite heavily during the Earth Day, um, events that are already taking place. Um, I'm sure that our social medias and things like that could start pushing some things out. Um, I'm gonna call maybe some news organizations and see if someone's interested in chatting with us if Ben's okay with that.
Yeah, love it.
I just like to propose things in the middle of meetings. Um, uh, it's really hard to say no, no. Um, so I think that we have a lot of people that could, could benefit or, or would be ready to push this out. Um, we've talked about the village potentially signing up, um, and utilizing it. Problem is, is we don't really have a lot of food waste. You guys don't eat a lot of things here.
Most everything gets consumed at the public.
Yes.
Yeah, but the senior center.
Yes, and we have been talking to Rachel about the senior center. Currently, the current space isn't quite feasible for having a composting bin somewhere that's safe, accessible in a future facility, absolutely. Um, so yeah, we have a couple of ideas. We're certainly gonna explore quite a bit here.
And then what, what's the sign up timeline? What's the sign up timeline?
Um, so ongoing throughout the whole term of the year. And we, there's language in the contract that kind of covers how that would work. Um, and then, uh, two things, we will also help promote this. I mean, it's in our interest to promote it as well. And we have, you know, various ways of doing that, including, um, being, I think, at your farmer's market. I think we are planning to do that. I'm not a hundred percent sure, I believe we are. Um, and, uh, you know, going to events and other, and other ways as well. So happy to do that. Uh, and then, you know, we also work with senior centers, um, right now, currently Oakwood, um, uh, Village, I believe is what it's called. And some other plans for other ones. So in the event that that becomes something you're interested in, we'll have you talk about that with you as well.
You also see in the agreement that Green Box will update us on the number of signups periodically. So I can keep bringing that information to you so that you can see how far we go.
Yeah, and diversion metrics as well. We'll let you know the weight of, uh, diverted food waste.
One thing that I learned during our meeting with Ben, uh, a couple of weeks ago too, just on the apartment question. So, um, in other places, I think largely in Madison and, um, some complexes, you've actually worked with the, um, the developer, the property manager to kinda get everybody in, you know, either offer that as a benefit, um, included in the rent or just that there's a location, uh, maybe in the trash collection area, like in a covered parking, and the folks that have signed up get a code, um, to unlock the, um, receptacle and put their compost in. So I think that's something that is pretty low hanging fruit for multifamily developments that are coming our way just to even send them to Ben and he can get, you know, take it from there. But just to make people aware that this is already a service that's active in the village. And, um, it seems like it make it pretty easy for the property managers to kinda get that set up with the tenants. So I was happy to hear about that.
Our goal is simple, easy and clean.
Yeah, so, uh, kind of along those lines, I was, it's sort of related to what I was gonna ask, um, you know, you know, thinking about how we compost at our house, um, four gallons seems like a lot even for two week period. I'm wondering, can you get neighbors together to share one or?
I don't really care how they use the bucket as long as it doesn't.
I just wanna kinda, yeah, share that information now because I feel like, you know, if, if multi- multiple families can use one, that would, that might benefit more people.
Definitely.
Uh, Tom?
I guess as you're discussing your communication plans, I would suggest, well, first off, the senior center is obviously an audience for some of that. Uh, maybe even doing a program, I don't know if that would fit into Rachel's mini schedules. Um, but the other area would be the food pantry. That'd be another good group too. Be interested in getting that word out.
Uh, yeah, just, um, also to be clear, like, things like the, um, the programs with multifamily developments wouldn't be covered by this unless it's like a single resident with a bucket, we can do that. But those kind of more, um, larger scale programs, we'd have to work out like a, you know, a deal with, with those developers or whoever it is on a, you know, one by one basis. Um, in terms of food pantries, very excited about that. We've, we're trying to, we have three, I think, two, actually only, sorry, uh, currently on board right now. But obviously that's, that's a place where a lot of food comes and, you know, is distributed to those in need and often a lot of it goes to, to waste there as well. So we wanna work with them. Unfortunately, a lot of times budgets get in the way of, of those situations. So, um, if you, uh, have ways of putting your finger on the scale in that situation, that'd be helpful as well because that's obviously a needful operation.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion second, um, as amended, I guess. Um, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Item eight, unfinished business, none. Item nine, new business, none. Item ten, reports of village officers, department heads and consultants. This is informational only. No action by the village board will be taken, see reports in the meeting packet. Uh, A, village administrator report, questions or comments for Martin? Hearing none. Uh, team B, director of public works report, update on downtown planters and flower boxes. And we had a memo in the packet, Jeff, anything?
Just if there's any questions, I like to keep you informed because this is a, this will be a change from where we've operated for the last couple of years and, um, we'll see.
Okay.
Do we expect it to look different or it'll be similar to what's up?
It'll look different. I mean, it's, yeah, versus, the, the previous group would go to the nurseries and pick out potted plants and, um, much more structured, um, almost more like an arrangement. Um, this is more of a, we're looking for color and blooming throughout the summer.
Okay.
Yeah. Cause we are not green thumbs necessarily, but we're gonna try it.
Good luck.
And they, you can see the mix. This is actually the mix that we've ordered that just came in today. We'll see.
Anybody else? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Ten C, police chief report, notice to revisions to management plan, policy, school resource, officer policy and juvenile policy.
Um, and I apologize, I didn't add the other two policies in the subject line here. But, uh, the first is the management plan, um, just with staffing levels and really to simplify matters. We've changed how we're communicating with staff, goals that we wanna set and their input on it. Um, the school resource policy, we had it before, but it was blended into our juvenile policy. Um, and then in juvenile policy, it also talks about, um, when we interview kids, um, how they're processed. Oh, uh, goes through a, a long list of, uh, different criteria. We pulled that out of our juvenile policy and made it its own policy. So we have our own SRO policy and that's to, um, fall in line with the sixth edition of standards for accreditation. Um, this one's a bit tricky though, uh, because we have such a detailed SRO MOU. I wanted to make sure it never conflicted and didn't restrict it anyway as we were moving forward with our, our relationship with the school. So what you see in policy is really a watered down version, um, and that, so that it.
Sorry.
A message.
A message came up on the screen.
What did it say? I have no idea.
Oh, well.
Not to worry, not to worry.
Disagreed. Sorry, Chief.
Was it, because this is an exciting stuff. Trust me, I love it. Yes. Uh, so that's that. And then just the juvenile policy's been revised because that was removed, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions, anyone? Okay, thank you, Chief. Let's see. Len, uh, item eleven, announcements and miscellaneous business. A, announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events and miscellaneous business. Village board members may provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of body may occur. Tim?
I'd just like to remind everyone watching from home to vote tomorrow, please.
Can I mention something?
Please.
And also be kind to the poll workers. And, um, if you haven't, if anybody's listening out there, make sure you check your polling place before you head out tomorrow. Um, you can check it at myvote.wi.gov and, yeah.
Okay.
Can I add a future agenda item? So the D E I committee is meeting this week and we. Oh, we're not there yet?
Was everyone done with announcements?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Okay, go ahead, Carleen.
Uh, D E I committee is meeting this week and I think that we will have something for the agenda for the next meeting, uh, regarding some proposed, um, listening sessions.
Okay. Anybody else for future agenda items? Hearing none. Item twelve, closed session business. Items for discussion and possible action under Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub C. Considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data, data. Data of any public employer by which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, attendance is limited to the village board and annex discretion any necessary staff or other individuals whose presence is necessary for the business at hand. A, village administrator appointment agreement. We have a motion to move into closed session, please, uh, Tom and Tim. Listen, roll call vote.
Van Campen?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
And Beshin?
Yes.
We are in closed session. Thank you all.